Extra.
Cause I know Zoom stuff has been weird lately.
Yes.
Oh.
I need to, okay.
All right.
I'm just waiting for you two to start.
Okay.
I know we don't have to do it broadcast, but starting it now so don't have to later.
Yeah. Whatever. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and call our work session to order at four thirty P M in the. Is this room? We've never been in this room.
City Council conference room.
Conference. City Council conference room. And it's October first, twenty twenty five. So we're gonna focus today on economic development.
Yes, so the the plan today is to start focusing on the economic development element. And getting our heads around kind of those um those goals and and concepts. And objectives in that element of the plan. Gary is gonna go over uh give us an overview of the. The Economic Development Strategic Plan the city has. So let me just start while he's he's grabbing something he forgot upstairs. So let me start by making sure we all understand the difference between those two things and it's clear for everybody. So we're going to be. Uh drafting and going through and getting ready to suggest to city council or recommend to city council. A general plan that has different elements and one of those elements is that economic development element. But the Economic Development Strategic Plan is a whole other animal. Um and for economic development element should be a well, for one thing, a lot simpler. It'd be a few pages as opposed to the I think the current strategic plan that the city has adopted is eighty something pages, eighty three, eighty five pages. Lot more complicated, a lot more, a lot more um. Action oriented steps to take toward various things, whereas the economic development. Um element is more of a a land use decision making tool. How do what how does our land use? How do our land use decisions? How are those? Impacting or helping or or not helping the economic development of the city? The community oriented part of that and how it affects citizens and how it helps citizens be part of the community, et cetera. So those are kind of the two different things. Does that make sense? The economic development element. High high altitude view, the strategic plan. Low altitude view and um that's they're different things. Uh our economic element might reference the plan or we should view it as how it serves or does not serve that plan. We're intersect with it, but it's not the same thing. Um so we wanted to just make that clear. And one of the things that you guys had asked for as the commission was to have an overview of that strategic plan that's already adopted and playing was adopted in twenty twenty two. Um twenty twenty two, most recently, you wanted an overview of that to make sure that you understand that and what it does and doesn't say and do. As we get started on our discussion of general plans element. Right, so that's a lot of words for, you know, as an introduction to. Uh Gary leading a discussion about the overview of the strategic plan.
Hey, should we have an overview of the strategic plan? All right, let me connect in and I'll do it.
Again, since we're in the workroom, if you guys want to eat while we do this. Because the purpose of this kind of room, so you don't want to wait for your food, go for it. Gary's had tougher audiences than the planning commission eating while he come.
Like Rebecca is equally intelligent. What are you saying?
What?
I didn't hear. There you go. You guys ready?
Yes.
All right, so. Oops. The plan. Strategic uh economic development plan. I can't get this centered. It messed it up on me.
An auto scroll pass where you.
No, no, it was just that. Get to this. So. Like Jared said. The plan was passed in June of twenty twenty two. And they had gone through oh about a year and a half of. Community outreach and analyzing. Uh data and it was done. By a consultant. Came in, it was the Miller and Associates Group. And so they looked at, they did. Uh look at demographics, looked at a lot of. Data about the city, population, land use, they looked at previous plans. General plans, transportation plans, they did outreach with community groups. Uh the council. Uh. The state leader groups came in. And the summary of the plan is really right here in this slide. And they did a an analysis. You know, a technical spot analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And as they came back, they put in or they organized the plan around these four categories, which is kind of a standard. National approach to economic development. You look at business retention and expansion. They also looked at business attraction. And entrepreneur and innovation and then quality of life. And they have strategies under each of these categories. So we can just go through uh the the first one. Well. Let let me tell you in their SWOT analysis. Some of the interesting things about the the strengths is a very highly educated workforce. A lot of people with a lot of education in the area, that's not only Oregon's strength. But it's Utah County's strength. The city also has had a history of a lot of businesses and startups. That's a good strength here as a city, the retail hub. Uh of Utah County now being the retail hub of Utah County. Uh we. Fall from the retail hub status every day. Because you have a lot of other places going on. You like Spanish Fork, a lot of growth down in Spanish Fork, a lot of growth up in the Lehigh area. And as the population grows, it's not like it was twenty five years ago. If you needed to go to a mall, you came to Orem. So there's a lot of competition from other places. So that is something, while it's still an important aspect of our economic development. It is a little uh. It does get eroded every year, to be frank. The also one of the the advantages we have is we have utopia with a lot of fiber and uh. Uh internet speeds that are high and good for businesses. Now, some of the weaknesses that we have. Is uh and it plays into economic development because as you try to get businesses and different things to come in. These are some of the factors that people look at. One is uh our housing market. In that home prices have the last ten years more than double. The average home price and that's not just Orem. That's in the whole community, uh whole county is is doing that. One of the interesting things is uh typical wages in Orem. Uh are low. Seven of the top ten occupations in Orem, according to the twenty twenty two plan. Be less than thirty five thousand annually. Orem has a lot of very low paying jobs because of the retail sector. If you have any questions, feel free to. Ask them or jump in anywhere you'd like. Um. Seventy eight percent of Orem's workers live outside the city. And seventy seven percent of Orem residents work outside the city. So in the morning. The majority of Orem residents leave Orem and they commute to uh Provo, Lehigh, Salt Lake, other areas to work. And then the people who work in Orem. Seventy eight percent of them commute from other places into Orem to work. So are the low wages? Wages that are earned by people that live here that work elsewhere? Or are they wages that are low because people that work here? Other words, what's that baseline to draw on from? You follow what I'm saying? I I think so. So let me try and answer it. And if I'm not answering it, let me know.
Okay.
So Orem has a lot of retail, which is on one hand, very good because you get retail sales tax. And that funds a lot of city operations. Those tend to be lower paying jobs. Now, if you look at the uh. Now, if you, I don't have the the stats here. If you look at like average household income, it's it's higher than the thirty five thousand annually that I talked about. Thirty five thousand annually, what that is of the typical wages for um. The uh top ten occupations that are in Orem because we're so heavily retail. You have a lot of people working at the mall or restaurants or things like that in the service industry. Their wages tend to be lower, but you have people who live in Orem. Who maybe go work at B Y U or they go work in Lehigh. And where they make a higher wage. So the average household. Makes uh a lot more money than what is being made by the service industry workers. That make up the majority of Orem's uh. Businesses that we have here. We're very focused on retail. Did that answer your question?
Uh I think so. Thirty five thousand dollars again is is the household income?
No, it's for the job that they're doing.
Okay.
So out of our, out of uh the typical wages for all of the service industry jobs. Seven of the to- uh top ten occupations. That we have in Orem. So if you take up the different types of occupations, you know, you have some that are like programmers. You have some industries that have programmers, they'll make a hundred thousand a year. But we have a lot of jobs in Orem where it's a retail clerk at the mall.
And to, sorry to interrupt, to Jim's question, some of those workers are from Orem and some of them are not. I don't know if there's a way to parse out how many of the hundred thousand dollar jobs are people who work in Orem, or people that are coming in to work in Orem. It's hard to say. It would be hard to say that other than to look at the data for the household income like you're saying and say, well, if the household income average is seventy nine, then you're, you know, whatever it is. That makes sense, Gary?
Uh let's see, where is that? Hey, there's the housing median, housing sense twenty seventeen, you can see it increasing. Uh then I think this is the. Okay, here's what you're talking about. Largest occupations with median earnings. So uh remember in twenty twenty two, we had twenty four hundred retail salesperson. And their wages on average are eighty thousand a year. We have uh post-secondary teachers, we have fast food. And counter workers and customer ser- service sales. It goes through all the different. Uh occupations and it shows uh the wages that typically go with it. So the number one occupation we have in Orem. Is a retail salesperson. And they make and there's twenty four hundred of them. On average, they make about twenty five thousand a year. Software developers. We have, it's on the far right. We have roughly eight hundred and fifty. And they make around a hundred thousand a year. But with the makeup of our economic base. So then we have post-secondary teachers. So we have people that work at B Y U, work at U V U. And do uh those types of jobs. Um and post-secondary high school, you know, all of those types of things. They're making around eighty five thousand a year. And there's twenty three hundred of them. And then you have fast food and counter workers, again, almost twenty three hundred. But they're making around uh twenty five thousand a year. Couple of thousand of, so you can just go through that and see where we have. Uh. The types of jobs we have in Orem. And the salaries that they pay. What now, if you're coming to, now here's an interesting thing. Now, sales tax revenue is important to the city. One of the recommendations it has in here is to talk about your sales tax. So what you have here is on uh fiscal year fifteen. The city got nearly nineteen million in sales tax. Which was almost thirty three percent of the budget. And property taxes, about seven point three million. And that made up twelve point seven one percent of the budget. If you jump down to uh twenty twenty one, where we had for sure numbers and not an estimate. In twenty twenty one, uh we increased the sales tax revenue to twenty eight million. But it increased that twenty eight million now became almost forty percent of the city's budget. So you can see it did increase in sales tax, but the percentage that the city's budget relies on sales tax revenue. Increase where it's forty percent and they estimate. It would be forty five percent in twenty twenty two. I don't have updated numbers. For this, so what percentage of that thirty million, let's say, is attributable to Costco? Uh. We we would have that information. We keep track and we know because of the the sales tax revenue that we get from the state. Because of uh being in Provo, we can tell you what the who the top sales tax. Producers in the city are, you know, we would have a big list. A lot of that information is confidential. Um and that we just can't give out, but we look at that, but clearly a Costco. Is uh is on the higher end.
Our dealerships.
Our dealerships. Things like that. Well, you know, what's on the lower end would be a uh.
Seven eleven.
A seven eleven or a small restaurant. You know, a a restaurant that. Has the capacity to, you know, serve. Thirty people a night. Well, that's what they're doing on it. And it could be other things. But if you also look at this now, our property taxes. After about seven point three million here. They went down uh and they've come back up seven point two million. But the as a percentage of the total budget, we've now gone property taxes from twelve percent, twelve point seven percent. To we've reduced it down to ten point seven percent. So our budget as a city is increasingly reliant on sales tax revenue. Does that make sense? Hmm so. With a strategic plan, what what this plan tried to do is go in and look at all of these types of factors. And how do you have a more sustainable? Uh. Approach to your budget. The problem with being heavily reliant on sales tax. And not finding the revenue sources in other low areas for the city is if you have a recession or something like that. Boy, it really is hard on the city because what that sales tax funds. Is things like fire, police, parks. Recreation, all of those things come out of general fund. Now we have things like sewer, water. Those types of uh services usually come from dedicated utility funds, enterprise funds. And what you pay in your sewer fee pays the cost of providing sewer services to you. But police and fire are general fund. Okay. So these are the numbers from the strategic plan, but again, I don't know how they've changed recently.
Just for clarification, so if our sales tax, we'll just use the estimated twenty twenty two numbers. If forty five percent is from sales tax and ten percent is coming from the citizens, that's only about fifty five, fifty six percent. So where is the remaining coming? Is it grants? Is it?
Some is grants, some are those utility funds. So the overall city budget would include utility funds, uh other. Special funds like that, uh road taxes, you go. Uh and it's not sales tax, but you go fill up your car. And the state, you pay some sales tax, but you also pay a tax that the state of Utah charges. And that, some of that gets sent back to the city at for road uh projects, things like that. So that's so under this, if you looked at this, yeah, you've got fifty five percent of your budget. And then your your water department and your sewer department, you're paying for water and sewer every month. And all of those funds go in to fund those things. And so those are enterprise funds. And so what we're really talking about in the general fund would be these, you know, here, it would be like the. Uh just under forty million. And that would pay police, fire, uh engineering, you know, a lot of things like that. And so that's why it's important for a city to have an economic development plan. Okay. So now coming back, looking at that, uh we we talked about this quickly. Here's an interesting. Um. Uh it's right here, this line. There are about forty nine thousand workers who are employed in Orem. Only about which ten thousand five hundred live in the city. Okay. So what happens is. We have people in Orem. About thirty six thousand every day leave Orem to go work in other locations. And thirty eight thousand people move or drive into Orem to work. And only about ten thousand five hundred actually live and work here in Orem. So one of the things about that 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 creates difficulties for the city. Is say, looking at your transportation plan. Okay, so you have a transportation master plan. Upon what basis do we decide? Uh to make our transportation plan. We have a lot of residents in Orem who leave Orem to work in other places. And we have a lot of people who live outside of Orem coming into Orem. So. We have kind of a regional approach to traffic because we got to move the people who live in Orem out to commute. In the morning and back into the city conveniently. But that are, that tends to have impacts on people who live here. But the people who live and work in Orem. There's only about ten thousand five hundred. And so how do you balance those things in your plans? So if you make it more convenient for people here in the city, are you making it less convenient for the commuters? Whether they're Orem residents commuting out or others who commute in or commute through Orem. From Lehigh to B Y U or Provo to Lehigh. You know, tho- those types of issues. So it's it's a hard balancing act. Uh to make those types of decisions.
So looking at this.
Uh where where do you want to look?
There's no, just overall, looking at this, it tells me we're attracting the wrong kind of businesses. As a city, because if we were attracting higher end, high tech businesses, we'd keep some of those people. Who are leaving to go work in Lehigh or Salt Lake or whatever, keep them here. I mean, that to me, that's a fair conclusion and that helps solve our traffic problems.
Have to keep your tech.
What about sales staff?
Have to keep your tech campuses to do it.
Well, that's, yes, we've talked about that before. Well, you don't seem to be making any headway along those lines, do we? Well, I'm just kind of pointing out.
I agree with you. I was just making a joke.
And and one of the recommendations in the strategic plan. Was to work with Canyon Park and the Mueller Group to get the tech center at Canyon Park. Uh fully leased out and working and all of that. But you also have to work with uh an underlying property owner and they didn't want to do that. So now that's a really hard land use decision. But I would argue, as we're just discussing here, we're not putting enough effort into it. It could solve a lot of problems.
Well, I think with the Canyon Park. Um you know, they sold twenty three acres. But the rest is going to be, they're trying to develop it and concentrate on improving it, but they have to get their lease rate down. Because they can't charge lease rates that are comparable to I fifteen front frontage, right? Yeah, so they've got, that's their business decision. They've got a.
No, I agree, but we could look at other areas of the city that we're not hanging out. I mean, I think overall, I think we're falling on our faces in this area.
West corridor would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to say, let's hold those conversations because I think they're great, but let's. I know.
Sorry, just had to chime in.
No, 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 I agree with you, but there's more information.
And and so one of the components with that. Is a land use element, right? So one of the issues that Orem has to deal with is housing and land use constraint. Because uh. There is only about eight percent of the land in Orem is open for development. And of that eight percent, approximately three percent is zoned for residential. You know, so where in the city do you uh provide? And that would be more along the lines of greenfield. But then you've got to ask yourself, okay, now how do we redevelop? You know, what what is it that we need? So let's see. Okay, so back to back to these strategies. The plan outlines uh these four areas of focus and puts in some action steps. And I'll just kind of talk about these and what the city's been doing. How long are we supposed to go with this? Do we have other things on the agenda?
Just for this, for the work meeting.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, you've got another half hour.
Okay. Um. So one is business retention and expansion. And that's for your existing businesses. How do you retain them? How do you help them expand? And a the report came back and made their number one recommendation that said. Um the number one core mission for economic development is the existing business base. And their number one strategy was to make the Orem Business Alliance, the O B A. Uh a priority. And the city's focused on that. We've gone from hardly anything to a pretty robust O B A. And so the O B A is the Orem Business Alliance. We usually have about monthly, we've got a program coming up next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, next Tuesday, I think. Uh we'll have an Orem Business Alliance. At those, we have, you know, anywhere from. Twenty, around twenty so or so businesses that come in. It tends to focus on small businesses. Uh you know, Costco doesn't come to this. The bigger businesses don't come to this. This is all really more mom and pop businesses. And the strategic plan said, you know, we should in uh focus on that and really engage. With that and helping small businesses. So we provide a lot of uh resources and. Educational and training things for them. There was a uh. At the library a couple of weeks ago, an event to help small businesses, especially those that are. Uh run by people who speak Spanish as their primary language to help them come in and. And outside resources we partner with to help them do taxes. And help them look at that and and give them help and advice in that way. So if you come to the, we just hold it right over there in the uh. So if you come to the, we just hold it right over there in the, uh, what do we call that building?
Library Hall.
Library Hall, thank you, Chair. In Library Hall out there, uh, you know, next week we'll probably have, you know, maybe thirty people there. Uh, coming in, we do this and we spend.
Who chairs the event and who, who's invited to participate?
Well, any business in Orem is invited to participate. We do a lot of outreach. They come to do it. We've been handling it, uh, in the, in community development. Uh, Kathy Lewis has been doing it. She just recently quit. And so we'll be shifting and doing something, uh, different. We'll, we'll, we'll still have it operate and run. But, uh, we're, we're going through that, figuring that out. But the program will go forward next week. Um, another recommendation was to engage elected officials and try to include them more in ribbon cuttings and things like that. One of the things the city does for small businesses, uh, is, uh, we will help them and facilitate ribbon cuttings for them. So business comes in, we help them with promotional things. We try to get, uh, mayor and council involved in those things. We try to do, uh, support and outreach with, uh, uh, the businesses and find out how they're doing, what their needs are. Uh, one of the things is talking about leveraging, uh, assets with U V U and B Y U. And you'll see this throughout this, uh, document. If you read it, there's a lot of detail under each one of these. Um, is to use the assets of U V U. Now, one of the things you'll hear me talk about, uh, later is the B R C at U V U, the Business Resource Center. And U V U and Orem work together on the Business Resource Center. Our name's on it. We help U V U get it started. The director of the Business Resource Center is an employee of U V U. And it runs through U V U, but we cooperate with and spend and, uh, try to make sure that the B R C is run while they serve the entire county. That they have an emphasis and focus on helping Orem community. So at our, uh, O B A meetings, the B R C representatives will come to that and tell people about resources. They have classes on lots of different things. You can, if you're a small business, you can go to the B R C and learn about digital marketing. You can learn about how A I can help you in your business. You can do a lot of, there's a lot of resources and classes and things that they do there. It also works with the university on, in, in kind of an incubator status of helping students get ideas and getting them rolling and moving. And there's been several businesses that have come out, that have come into Orem. Okay. Uh, next is, uh, business attraction. How do we get businesses in? So one of the things that they recommended, that first one is inventory, uh, ground in Orem. All of the, uh, commercial and industrial, because you run on sales tax. But in a perfect world, you want to have good paying jobs around it. So tell you a story, in Provo, Provo always, you know, every meeting I'd go to, people say, you know what we need on Center Street? And I say, what? Center Street in Provo needs a crate and barrel. Why can't you guys work on a crate and barrel? And be like, oh man, that's a great idea. We'd love to have a crate and barrel. But what Crate and Barrel will do is they come into the community and they look at the census tract. And they, that surrounds the location where you might want them to come. And they say, oh, okay. Uh, how many people live in a quarter mile? How many people live within a half mile? What is the average income for people within those concentric circles that go out? Oh, that happens to be one of the poorest census tracts in the entire county. Uh, no, thank you. We won't be coming there. Because for us to come and be successful, we need to have within a quarter mile or a half mile radius a certain amount of disposable income, or it doesn't work for us. Uh, so with that, looking at different properties. So, uh, when In-N-Out Burger came to Orem on the Parkway, everybody in Provo flipped out and went into a panic. Oh my gosh, how on earth could In-N-Out go to Orem? You gotta be kidding. We're Provo. In-N-Out should be in Provo. Because we're better than Orem. You know, why is Orem getting this? So in Provo, we actually got a vice president, regional vice president from In-N-Out to come to Provo. And we actually got a helicopter and flew him over the town. Said, look what a cool community Provo is. Look at all these great things. Look at down here on University Avenue, down in East Bay. Look at all of these areas. And when we got done with it, the person, uh, the, the representative said, you know, you've got a great community. I get why you love it. I get why you have so much going for you. Now let me tell you how we do this. As soon as your traffic counts on that location you were showing me reach this level, call me and we'll come in. We're like, well, hold it, you know, with growth, someday it will happen. Don't you want to get in that? No, that's not what. If, if there's not another In-N-Out within twenty miles, traffic counts have to be here. If there's another In-N-Out within two miles or three miles, the traffic counts have to be here. So as soon as that happens, it's just a formula we have. Call us and we'll look at it. But wouldn't the land be cheaper now? We, we don't worry about that. This is just how it fits into our formula and how we do it. And so taking an inventory and looking at things for the, uh, in Orem so that we can talk intelligently with other business, businesses that might call us and where do they want to locate? So we've been doing that. One of the things we haven't doing is the, uh, target industry analysis. That's something we haven't done. That's a recommendation in here to do. Now, we've been doing a lot of what's in here, but we haven't been doing everything. Now, a T I A is something that your community can do. You go out, you hire, uh, Springmeyer and Associates or a group like that. And they come in and they look at all of the different types of businesses that you have. And what do you have? What don't you have? Uh, you know, because, uh, one of the things that, uh, for years that, that, um, for instance, Provo, like Dapless, geez, nobody can go in Provo and buy a suit. You had to go to Orem to do that. And then finally Provo got Joseph F Banks in Down at Riverwoods. And so that, you know, so that T I A will go in and not just retail, but all the different types of industries that are out there. What are the industries that are needed? Where are they located? Uh, and which ones can come in? So that could be a valuable thing to do. And then, and then once you do something, you create that, uh, develop, you know, an integrated economic development plan for those things. And again, with that, you've got to cooperate with, uh, the governor's office of economic development, Utah County Chamber, all of those things. So, uh, and you got to understand retailers and businesses often don't know or care what community they're in. So Provo has the airport. We invited, we were trying to get Duncan Aviation to come. So if Duncan Aviation comes, and Provo spent about two and a half to three million of infrastructure costs and all of this to get Duncan Aviation to come to the airport at Provo. So when they were first, uh, doing things, we had a big meeting with Duncan Aviation representative flew into town. And, uh, the mayor of Provo at the time went to go get that representative, pick him up, going to show them all over, all over the community because we wanted them to come. We were working with the governor's office to get them in. And, uh, we went to, I think it was like the Hampton Inn on the Parkway to pick them up because that's where they were staying. And so we picked them up and if you don't know, the Hampton is in Orem. And the mayor said at one point, geez, couldn't you even stay in, in Provo? And they all kind of left. You could have stayed at the Marriott. And, uh, later I was talking to him about things. He goes, you know, I thought I was in Provo. I didn't realize this. My secretary just got on my Google Maps and said, oh, B Y U, that's in, oh, there. Yeah, they, I, and booked me here. He said, we have, I had no idea I was in Orem or Provo. But to us, it makes a huge difference. Now with Duncan, we later on did an analysis and Duncan created a lot of jobs. And Duncan worked, and it was great because that's what we needed to do. We used a lot of HUD money and different things like that and our money to do it. And all of the jobs they made, hardly any of them, the percentage was in the, like ten percent of the employees lived in Provo. Most of them lived in Springville or Orem or Mapleton or something like that. So all those high paying jobs that we'd spent hundreds of hours working on and lots of money, they didn't stay in Provo and shop. So from a regional standpoint, things like that make a lot of sense. And the state loves it, the county loves it. But, you know, we got to be careful. You may get a business like that. And if we don't have, you know, the housing or the other issues that employees of a business may want, we may spend a lot of time and effort and then they live in Springville. And they tend not to stop on their way home and shop at a Provo grocery store. And so that's what we found. So, you know, with that, uh, business attraction, you know, what type of businesses? Is it high paying jobs? What do we get? Is it retail that feeds the sales tax? You know, those are really important issues, balance of ways you go through. Okay, am I taking way too much time? You guys aren't asking me questions. Shame on you. So.
Very careful what you ask for.
So another, uh, key, uh, not strategy, but focus would be entrepreneurship and innovation. How do you foster that? And we're really lucky. B Y U and U V U are, uh, really actually very good at entrepreneurial, uh, activities. And a lot of people in that incubator come at, come, those incubator, uh, ideas and projects come out. The B R C is a really good resource. Just recently, we toured the B R C with Representative Kennedy. And, uh, John Curtis wasn't there. He sent, uh, someone and U V U people, Orem people, because we're trying to get more funding, uh, from, uh, the federal government or economic development in the area to put more resources to help that innovation. With, uh, the Trump budget, I, I would doubt we'll be able to get some money. But, but we're in, we're trying to increase that. Part of this strategy is also, uh, not just working with B R, uh, the B R C at U V U, also trying to integrate with B Y U. Uh, we've put effort into U V U. We see a lot of good, uh, businesses. And I don't want to name anyone in particular. They have nurtured them, found places for them, and then they went to Lehigh. So we do a lot of things like that. So part of getting businesses to stay is having a place where they can go and do, and do things. Question?
That's not a question because we, we listened to Madeline, told us, you know, briefly finish. Oh, we're running out of time.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Oh, no, ju- jump in, please.
Have you identified which business brings a high ticket item for sales tax revenue?
Yeah, yeah.
You have all that?
Yep. We, we know a lot of, we know what the high sales tax revenue producing businesses are. And the high sales tax revenue producing businesses tend to be things like a Costco, uh, a, a Buc-E's, everybody heard. You've been to a Buc-E's? Springville just got Buc-E's. There's, there's no place for a Buc-E's to go in Orem. That meets their criteria. They need, you know, quite a few acres. They need a freeway frontage and looking at things. So we could get that. But, but yeah, we look at a lot of things. We work with our partner, Woodbury. Uh, we want Woodbury to be successful, the things that they're looking at, people they're trying to bring in. So that's, that's one of the issues. So there's retail component to it and there's the business high paying wage component to this.
There's the business highway, business, business highways paying component. Bring in considerable sales tax revenue? I mean, when you go sell software, you don't charge.
Yeah, you don't charge.
Yeah, so if you're, if you want to bring in people that make a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm seeing too much conflict here. You're trying to solve a problem that, right, creating another problem. You're going to go get the high-tech people here, which will not receive sales tax revenue, but you need sales tax revenue for the state's budget. You're going to go get retail that pays very little to people to have low income. And then the low income people will be able to afford the city because the high.
Yeah, and, and, and. Yeah, and that's the hard thing because it is a balancing act. If you want to get high, high paid jobs.
I think that's the question, the question, right?
A balancing act when we don't even have control in the boss trying to balance.
Have control of what?
The system. You're, like you said, like, like Duncan Aviation came in. You guys spend a lot of money. We had no guarantees they'll create jobs for Provo. You actually lost. You lost some of the jobs somewhere else. It's, it's all about choice of capitalism.
Yeah, they created jobs, but they didn't live.
Yes, they didn't live in Orem.
In Provo.
True.
And so they weren't shopping. And so that's the same thing here. So is our strategy, do we try and go out and I just die?
I'm back.
Oh, I'm back, okay. Um, if you create, so you know, it was that whole tension, let's use Canyon Park for example.
That's a very big outliers. It's, it's a big outlier, Canyon View is a big outlier. I did, I, I keep saying it every time the name comes up. Offered to an entire building before they sold it and crashed it. And they would not lease it for a favorable price that is in line with the Orem city. And when I went to Lehigh, I took fifteen million dollars worth of revenue to Lehigh because, because I can get it for nineteen dollars square foot in a considerable place where they want to charge me twenty-eight dollars square foot in the middle of Orem.
Yeah, I'm not here to let it re-litigate. Canyon Park's over. What I'm saying is Canyon Park is an example of this tension, right? You want to create areas in your city where somebody can do what you wanted to do. So you got to have the city putting in the regulatory scheme to make that work so that they can do it and be there. You have to have a property owner that wants to do it. And then to make it worth it to you as a city, hopefully you've provided the housing and different things like that, that people will be here. Or if you don't have housing, you've provided the type of retail and things that people will want to come and shop and do that stuff. And that's a really hard thing.
I mean, as a business.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you.
I don't care what the city wants.
Yeah, of course.
I don't care what the city, the city can go up, like unless if the city mandates certain, which you can't, who can work and who can live and what you could do.
That's right.
The question is to provide enough affordable housing. Doesn't, the city has no say. Yeah, zero control. Unless if you make developers sell their properties at a discount, which will never happen. So I'm, I'm, I want to see, how can we attract people to Orem in a sustainable cohesive way? Which businesses we want to attract to bring in the most revenue? We all understand, and this is maybe, maybe, um, it's a sore topic for me. I left, I sold all my car businesses that were in Orem because of Orem studies. State Street Master Plan, what happened? You guys lost revenue on three dealerships. Got rid of them, uh, done. I was done. Sold one and, and one of them I sold it to moved to American Ford. Also because State Street, because they wanted to renovate and he couldn't. I know we had that. That's no longer an issue. Yeah, he was told he has to spend two million bucks. I told us, have to spend two million bucks after spending a million and a half on a property just to make it code compliant. I'm like, screw the city, go to somewhere friendly. I'm like, screw the city. Go to somewhere friendly. That's just what's happening. So how can we bring those people back? How can we bring businesses in that brings a sales tax revenue? And don't, I don't want to hear because, well, we got to provide cheaper housing. Unless if you're willing to pay for it yourself and rent it for cheap or sell it cheap, it's just not going to happen.
Yeah, the city's not going to go out and by regulation, create affordable housing in the city. It's a regional, and by region, I, I don't mean just Utah. It's a regional issue.
A national issue.
It's a national issue. It's a regional issue.
And we can't fund, we can't fund enough developers or give them land for the price enough because the land, private property owners, right, get it for as much as they can for themselves and their kids. We are chasing something that move at the pace we're moving at. We're not going to accomplish what we need in three years. Everything.
I think what we did last time, talking about that university.
And that's a great idea.
Vents, hotels.
Where we're going to do things, you know, like, like Madeline have talked about. Less being a highway services corridor for businesses. And if you go to quality of life, that's one of their recommendations.
A hundred percent.
Is that exact thing? So in response to this, what the council did is that's why we've got the heart of downtown. A study going on, trying to make an arts and entertainment district that would bring people into the city to do things. One of the recommendations that they have are things like activities that bring people into the community where we can have sales tax. Anybody go to the taste of Orham? Okay, shame on everybody else in this room except Dave Spencer.
In fairness, I was gonna go, but I had a conflict.
You talked about it, but I was allergic to heaven.
And, and, and that's fine, Mike. And what I, what I like to say to that is the road to hell is paved with good intentions.
Good intentions. I chose the thing that was more important.
Well, I took a look at the offerings and declined, so.
Okay, decision. And you know what? As a city, this was our first attempt, which is great.
I thought, I thought it was cool. I thought it was a good idea.
I went in, it was fantastic. And when people ask me, how does Orham taste? I say, Orham tastes good.
Plus that good music, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had good music. So, yeah, that.
Here for my house. I didn't have to go anywhere.
Yeah, did that, would that solve all of our problems? No, of course not. But if it's those types of things, the plan for the heart of downtown, the taste of Orham, Summerfest.
Farmer's market.
The farmer's market, that's been a wild success. What did I say? Okay, there's no such thing as Summerfest. It's Orhamfest. I don't know. We must have misheard.
Only losers use Summerfest.
I am a loser. No, I'm talking about the people who bitch about the shoes and.
Oh, I was just gonna say, just like two minutes.
We move too slowly.
Yeah.
Way too slowly because we're being left in the dust.
Recreation tourism.
Businesses move faster.
Can't complain about median income in Orham if we're going to want to bring more retail for sales tax. I, I, it's, it's an oxymoron. Need more income.
So Doris, Doris, the Parks Department has a great plan. We've got, what, a 44 acre park? They're bringing in regional tournaments. And people are staying. We're getting money. We just got, what, I think $2 million? Is that right, Dave? From the county for.
Yeah, we're also talking about Ironman.
When we used to have the storytelling festival. We, that was a, that was a beautiful side quest. We go spend the money on it for somebody and a couple of years later, let's take it somewhere else. You shouldn't do this for us. I know.
Anyway.
But, but it's just, it's the fact that, why, why, why can we, why can we market something like that?
And but it's also looking at these and saying, what businesses do we need to support these? We can't have an Ironman come in. Well, we want an Ironman to come in, but we also need the hotel rooms for them to come and stay in.
Hospitality, hospitality creates.
I'm just using that as an example, but.
It's a great example.
And that's stuff that we can control. But we need to adjourn for, to our next meeting. But just to wrap up super quick, this is online. You have access to it. I would look through it. You can get a lot of it out of just the charts. Uh, there is a leakage report at the end. If you want to see, I mean, it's a little old, but if you want to see what we have, a lot of people coming into the city and buying and what, what we're lacking, what grocery stores, isn't it grocery stores? Like 75% or something like that, which means we're not capturing a lot of grocery store. But just to get ideas, to think as we're talking about some of these things. And then this is draft. It's online. If you want a paper copy, let me know. I talked about it briefly last week. This is basically, it's very high level. It's basically taking what was the strategic plan and what's currently in our economic plan, kind of matching it up in a couple of places. And just talking through like what some of these points are. And this is just to start discussion of things we've talked about that's already there. And like I said, basically, I, when I was putting this together, I divided it into three. So there's develop and supporting existing business while expanding business and employment opportunities. So that's the employment side. There's be a sophisticated regional rehab, retail hub. Let's talk about what those kinds of things could mean and what we would need. And then, um, talking about being an entertainment. And that's where some of the tourism stuff came out of the strategic plan, other things. So if you would like to look that over so we can start actually discussing specifically what we want. And, and of course, our aim here from us as the planning commission is how can we use planning and zoning to.
Move it along.
Move it along. Yeah. Because I agree. I think we need to.
And let me just jump in and say one more thing. If you look at the implementation metrics in this plan, long term is three to five years. This was right in 2022. So from 2025 to 2027 is the timeframe in which we should probably reanalyze this plan and see if it's still, and that's the thing. Economic development moves so quickly. You can't have an economic development plan and update it every 15 years. Things change too fast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. We will begin with item three, which is our consent agenda, which includes item three point one, approval of minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. The item three point two, a plat amendment for Bellevue Ridge located generally at two fifty-eight North Palisade Drive. And item three point three, plat amendment D Anna B subdivision plat D located generally at five seventy-two South, eight hundred eighty West. So if there's any questions, any concerns or anything you'd like removed from that, any comments? If not, we can go to motion. There's nothing.
I move that the Orm City Planning Commission approve items three point one, three point two, and three point three of the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay, Rod moved and Jim seconded that we approve the consent agenda item. Hayson?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, consent agenda is passed unanimously. Then we'll move on to item four, which is a preliminary plat for Okowitz Plat C located generally at twelve seventy-four North, two sixty West. And I will turn that over to Jared to introduce.
Thank you. Um, as you, as you pointed out, this is a preliminary plat, Okolowitz Plat C, twelve seventy-four North, two sixty West. This is located in the R eight uh, zone. It is a total of about one point oh three acres and it is four lots, although this is a, a deep lot or flag lot subdivision. Um, you can see, I'll go to the next slide. It's maybe easier to see, but uh, it does contain four lots. Uh, you can see the turnaround there. We'll look at that in just a moment. Just a clarification, that address, twelve seventy-four, two sixty West, this is Daniel Drive. So this property comes off of Daniel Drive. The address is complicated because of other land the Okolowitz is owned here and this longer piece of property that used to be contained in this as well. The property, there's an existing couple of structures that would be removed to make the sub, to make way for the subdivision and, and new homes to be built there. The access, as we said, is from Daniel Drive. And is a part of the lot at the rear lot three. That's the extension, the flag or deep portion of the lot. Lot four is the lot with frontage directly on Daniel Drive. Uh, and then lots one and two are also accessed off of this long portion of lot three. This is the turnaround area for the fire department and emergency services, public services. Um, and then there'd be no parking allowed in those, in those areas and on this, on this flag. Twenty-six foot wide minimums required. Um, that's met here. These lots all, because again, it's a deep lot subdivision and it's R eight zoning, R eight zoning. The lot with frontage up here needs to be at least eight thousand square feet. It does meet that. The other lots all have to be a hundred and twenty-five percent of the requirement. This is the my favorite zone for flag lots because the math is easy, so they got to be ten thousand square feet uh, as a minimum. They all meet or exceed that uh, requirement. This has been reviewed by the technical um, design review committee and went to the design review committee on September twenty-ninth uh, and was, and was approved by that committee, moving it on to the planning commission's agenda for review of the preliminary. Uh, you have any questions for staff? You know, we went, we went through that pretty fast. Sorry about that.
No worries. Any questions? Okay, yeah.
Um, so I just have an issue. Uh, I, and, and, and this is on me. Um, I, I reviewed this uh, project recently. Um, and, and I think there's some concerns about whether or not it complies with our deep lot code. Principally how close lot one is to the street. Um, having said that, if, if you'd like to get into the nitty gritty, I'm happy to. Um, but, but my kind of suggestion would be that we table this until that can be addressed. But uh, yeah, do, do you want more detail on that?
Commission, would you like further information? Like clearly.
I think we should table it for him to do when necessary work.
But do we want to understand what's going on or just do you need, want more time to look into it more specifically?
I would like to understand.
Yeah. Um, Aaron, could you turn your mic on? It turns off when four people turn those on. And so it creates really awkward.
I, I, I think it makes most sense to have staff to take a chance to, to, to look at it more closely and figure out a way to get it to comply with the code. If, if you'd like to, to hear kind of um, what the issues are the legal department has with it right now, I'm, I'm happy to go over that. And if, if you don't feel like that's an issue, then you can go forward, but.
Do the, the applicants understand this challenge that you're talking about?
So, so I, and again, I, I have to apologize. This is on me. I, I spoke to the applicant right before the meeting and said, hey, I've got a thing. I just want to let you know, but I haven't had a chance to get into the details on it yet with him.
So it is, it appears though there's a working solution. Uh, do you have any feel for that at all? Or too, again, too early to tell?
Too early.
So, so you wouldn't feel that it would be appropriate that we uh, approve this because of the issue that's a concern to you?
Yeah, we just have, the legal department just has concerns that it doesn't comply with the ordinance.
Okay.
It would seem to me that we would be well served to just have it discussed further before we really make a determination on this.
That, that's kind of my recommendation or request, but again, it's
Right.
It's your call.
So I guess I can make a motion that we table this.
We can. The question is, do we want to hear from the applicant at all today and get a feel for what this project is? Is the applicant, Jerry, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Washburn? No, Washburn's the other guy. Right. Right. Can you say that again, just for the record?
Could we maybe get an idea of what the issue may be? We, we're not sure how to, how to address it if, unless we know what the issue is.
Yeah, we can ask for more information. I think that's. Or do you want to just table it?
Yeah, I disagree.
You want to just table it?
I want to just table it. It makes no difference for us what the issues are currently. I mean, we'll understand it when it comes back. And it will just take longer than necessary since we're gonna have to, nothing with it.
I, I agree with that. It's just.
Well, Rod has already asked if, if you want more information. Are you okay with dis tabling it then?
Well, yeah, I, I think, no, I'm not okay with table. I'd like to have a brief explanation, you know, two minutes or less of what the problem is. We don't have to, you know, reinvent, solve the problem tonight. I'd like to know what the issue is before I, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to give that explanation.
Brief explanation would be.
So um, our, our subdivision ordinance under the development requirements um, states that uh, for the access to a deep lot, um, the access shall be no wider than twenty-six feet. And um, the opening there, I, I, I believe is, and, and, and there may be an argument that it can be measured in a way that keeps it less than twenty-six feet, but the, 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 the part of the access along the sidewalk, if, if you look at the, the curve data, I believe is thirty-five feet, which, which exceeds that twenty-six foot requirement. Um, kind of the bigger issue and the more clear one legally is uh, in that same subsection, it states no part of a deep lot may be located within eighty feet of any point of an intersection between the access and the street from which it has access. In other words, no deep block can be within eighty feet of the street. Um, and lot one um, is.
So that explanation's adequate for me.
Okay. So that's it. So I think, I think the wise course would be to table is, do we have a motion? Jim?
I, I move that we table this consideration.
Or continue it? Do we want to just continue it to the next planning commission? Or do you need more time?
Continue it until legal has
Yeah.
Has brought it before.
Is that specific enough?
The time that you need.
It is indeed. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to have a date for this?
That's what I'm trying to ask. Do we need a date or can we just say that until legal's had a chance to review it?
You can do it uh, event specific in that when staff's ready, put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay. Ooh, did my, I'll give, I'll give Rod credit for that one. Okay. Jim moved and Rod seconded that we continue this item until staff is ready to bring it before us again. Jim?
Hi.
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 Okay. The motion is passed and this will be continued until further meeting. Gary, do you have anything for us at this time? Okay. Then if that's all, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
A motion we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mike moved and Hayson seconded that we adjourn. Hayson?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, it's unanimous. We are adjourned and motion passes and we're adjourned at five forty-six PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.